Appeals to Order, 8:05 PM. A little bit later start than we hoped for. If you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, on a nation under God, in its full liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda would be the acceptance of minutes from April the fourteenth, two thousand fifteen. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Yeah, the acceptance of minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Here, amen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are deemed accepted. And just also with respect to our records, we do have two excused absences tonight. Mr. Laporto and Mr. Morgan. Committee reports, I don't believe there's a housing partnership report, correct?
There is not.
And is there a report from the Merrimack Valley Plan Commission, Mr. Byers?
No, nothing tonight to report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well then, next on our list would be a new public hearing. We have an application for a special permit and variance as it relates to rear setback and two-side setbacks in the R4 district at fifty-six Beverly Street, MAP nine, lot thirty-three. Petition of Stephen and Patricia DeRosa. Could we open the public hearing?
Notice is hereby given that the Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall, one-twenty Main Street, North End of Mass on Tuesday, May twelfth, two thousand fifteen, at seven-thirty PM to all parties interested in the petition of Stephen DeRosa. The property located fifty-six Beverly Street, MAP nine, parcel thirty-three, North End of Mass, one-eight-four-five, in the R4 zoning district. Petitioners requesting both a special permit and variance. The existing garage will be razed in order to construct a new garage. Petitioners requesting a special permit from section point, sections nine-point-one of the zoning bylaw for pre-existing non-conforming structure. Our uses, however, may be extended or altered. Also, variances from table two of the zoning bylaws and needed dimensional requirements for two-side setbacks, left and right, and one rear setback. Applications supporting materials available for review at the office of the zoning department located at sixteen hundred Osgood Street, North End of Mass, Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, from the hours of eight to four, Tuesday from the hours of eight to five-thirty, and Friday from eight to eleven-thirty. Play order to the Board of Appeals. Albert P. Manzi III, S. Square, Chairman.
Thank you. Nice job. Okay, Mr. DeRosa, you're welcome to come and tell the board what it is you'd like to do.
My name is Steve DeRosa. My wife Patricia and I are the homeowners of fifty-six Beverly Street. We've lived there for eleven years. They're currently there, on the property, there's a garage that measures forty-five by nineteen. And when I had the surveyor come by and do the surveying, he found that the garage was actually encroaching one and a half feet on my neighbor's property. So that's one of the reasons why I went ahead with this, in this direction. The garage I have is eighty-five years old and its construction is compromised. It's, it's, it's concrete block wall. Three walls are concrete block retaining walls, actually, is what they are. If I sent pictures, and you can see the garage is actually set down into the ground there. Two of the walls are, on the sides are okay, but they're cracked, but the rear wall is really giving away. So what I'd like to do is move this garage forward three feet. I want to build a new garage, move it forward three feet, and then move it to the left and put it fully on my property, so that it's less non-conforming, but it would still be non-conforming, but it'd be less non-conforming than it is now. So I have the hardship of the property, not because of the R4 zoning, I don't have a large enough lot that meets the R4 requirements. And I have, the width is only fifty feet there at the back of the property. So the hardship is the restrictive lot width. So, um...
But you have to get it, I mean, so your existing one is on, is over the property line?
It is over the property line by a foot and a half.
So, yes, so you have to come in, so you want to...
So I want to move it in to get it within my property completely. And I want to make it a little bit larger also because of, I'm interested in old cars. I have two antique automobiles and I have a collectible automobile also, a newer car that's collectible. And I try to keep all three cars inside for the winter. And I run out of room when I put lawn mowers and lawn equipment and patio furniture, and it gets pretty jammed up in there. So I'd like to make it a little bit larger so I can at least walk around the cars when I have them in the garage, which I can't do now when I park them in the garage. I don't know if I have other notes here. The structure that's there, as you can see from the pictures, has a flat roof. And on the back, it's, it's only about two and a half, three feet off the ground in the back. And because of the structure being compromised, the roof is weakened. And I'm concerned that some children or animals might jump up on the back of the roof and fall through it, or even fall off the front of it where it's ten feet high. The garage is ten feet in the front. And I have a concern there, a safety concern. Now, the garage I'm proposing is a poured concrete, three walls reinforced, with a steel hybrid building. It's a steel framework with wooden girts, they call them, which are like the beams and rafters. And then the steel outer skin is screwed onto that wood. So the whole thing is bolted together back, actually. The building that I would like to build is forty-five feet wide, which is what I currently have. I just want to move it into the property lines. But I want to go twenty-eight feet deep, which gives me the room that I'm looking for, rather than the nineteen feet that I have now.
But it looks like that your increased width is actually away from your lot line is coming back towards your dwelling.
Yes, I want to move it away from the back wall, back line.
You're not, you're not going in the wrong direction, you're going in the right direction.
Yes, oh, yes, absolutely.
Sure. And is, what's the height with this new roofline?
It's a maximum, it's actually nineteen and a half feet is the peak, right at the peak.
Is that higher than your house?
No. No, the house is, um, I would guess closer to twenty-nine, thirty feet.
Yeah, so the height, so the height for the district is thirty-five feet for their structure?
Have spoken with a couple of neighbors, and as a matter of fact, one of my neighbors is here in support. The man that my, my garage is sitting, one foot on his property is, was the one man sitting next to me. My neighbors that I've spoken with and...
He doesn't want to claim an interest in your garage?
Is he paying you rent? He should be paying you rent, right?
Outside, they said I should be paying him back taxes, too.
I didn't want to pick that up.
But the neighbors I've spoken to all have been in support of what I'm trying to do here, because they, they know that this old garage is, it's old and it needs to be replaced.
We can certainly see by the photos, I can see the structural defects on the wall as well. Any, any specific questions from anyone?
I do. So now my question to you. And to you, Al.
Why are you asking me questions?
If he actually had the same setbacks of the garage, a ten-point-eight on the, on the right, and a six-point-seven, you wouldn't have to be here, would you?
Yeah, he would.
You're saying if I reused the walls that I had?
The side setbacks are fifteen.
But doesn't increase the non-conformity of the lot?
Oh, okay.
So if you kept it within the setbacks of your home, you wouldn't have had to come for a permit. So technically, you wouldn't have needed a permit if you made it just, if you stayed within the limits of your house.
Oh, yeah, you're saying if I made it a one-car garage in the middle of the yard, yes, it would, it would...
It wouldn't be one.
Why would he?
Because the setbacks are fifteen feet on the other side and fifteen feet in the back.
Right, but your house is set back six-point-seven.
Oh, yes.
And the other side's at ten-point-eight. So therefore, you're not increasing the non-conformity of the lot, not requiring you to get a permit.
He's still rebuilding the new structure.
It's a different structure, it's not attached, Alan, he would still need the waiver.
No, you wouldn't.
Why is that?
Because you're not increasing the non-conformity of the structure.
He's not increasing it now with an existing garage.
He is.
I've said it would be less non-conforming.
He's going to one, to one-point-three. It's one, an inch, I mean, a foot, a foot, on the lot line.
And he's also increasing the square footage of the garage, too.
Correct. If you, if you don't increase the non-conformity, the law's already non-conforming, it's already grandfathered, it's already, it's already non-conforming. So if you do not, Jerry and I actually went into this in detail.
But he's raising the structure.
Correct.
He's, he's rebuilding the structure.
But he's within, his rights to keep it within the side of the house, because he doesn't increase the non-conformity.
If he went in the same footprint, though, he would still be on his neighbor's yard.
Yeah, I mean...
Why is the house governing what you're talking about and not the existing garage?
Because it's the non-conform, it makes that lot non-conforming, the house.
And the garage does not?
The garage is existing, yes, the garage is existing. So I, I have a, I have a huge problem with one foot and one-point-three. I mean, not in a huge structure of twenty-eight by forty-five, a story and a half, which is twenty feet high.
That's effectively the same size as what's there, only he's making it wider.
But still, when you, when you...
It's not, it's not...
But when you change it, you have the ability to better it.
Yeah, he can, I mean, he could leave it. But that's the, that's the whole point of the hearing.
Correct.
That's the whole point of the hearing.
I just think it's too close to the lot line, and I just think one-point-three and one, one foot is an awful...
It's already open at the lot line.
Correct, but he's changing it, so when you have a chance to change it, you have a chance to better it.
True.
I'm the, I'm the only one on the island here, so, and this is my...
You're not under an order to change it, you're doing voluntarily.
Yep.
No.
So what you're saying is...
For me, it's more of a safety concern than anything else at this point.
I want to correct these issues, but I want to, I want to maintain at least what I had.
Yes.
And so...
It doubled, what I had in size.
The only thing that he's increasing in terms of non-conformity is on the one edge of the existing garage, it used to be two-point-six feet, he's now changing that to one. If he were to pull that one side of the garage, an additional one-point-six feet, he would be not, he would be not making it worse.
To allow a fifty, almost said ninety, ninety percent variance is just not...
It's already there.
Not comfortable for me. Yes, that's right, it's already, but when you change it, you lose all that. It's changed.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but that's part of the, that's part of the application. That's, that's part of what he's looking for, because he's changing it voluntarily.
But I don't agree with the change, so...
Can I point something out here? And I totally understand that he's trying to make a bad condition better. Okay, I totally get that, okay? And the, the garage is encroaching upon the neighbor's house, and he's not collecting money for rent. So he wants to take it off the neighbor's, put it on, on his own land, totally by that. I have no problem with that. The only problem I have, because of all the non-conformity, all right, and the one-foot setbacks and everything else, currently, and these are approximate numbers according to my math, the current structure is eight-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet, by doing the math, forty-five times nineteen. The new building's going to be forty-five by twenty-eight, which is twelve-sixty. Okay? So he's really increasing it by quite a few hundred square feet. If he was to come to me with eight-fifty-five, nine-hundred square feet, and want to keep in those conformities to try and make it a little bit better, I would have no problem. But he's really looking to increase the non-conformity. Am I making sense here? Okay, by, on a square footage basis.
Right.
Okay, so we're taking a bad situation, and we're making it worse? With the exception of him putting the building within the building lot.
That depends if you consider the not, the size of the structure to be somewhat, you know, taking away from the character of the neighborhood, I mean, I think...
And it's way, way back there.
I mean, I think that, I think in the context of what he's doing and where it's placed, you know, I don't really have any, I think everybody's making legitimate, raising legitimate concerns, but I think doesn't, it really kind of fits with what's there. Because it's, you know, it's a section of town where there were always those smaller lots to be in with. They only became non-conforming when the zoning act established whatever the zoning size is for those, for those lot ratios. At one time, that was, that was conforming, right, before, prior to zoning. So he has to work within the context of his lot, and he has to work with what fits there, and he has to work with what's in the neighborhood. And I think if the neighbor, you know, particularly if the neighbors are in support of it, I don't really see what the issue was. I could buy into it if everybody, if we had a room full of people that were, you know, pounding, pounding the pavement. But I think the, the increasing of the non-conformity is relative to really the totality of the package. That's what I see, you know. I think what you're doing is probably an improvement, is probably to the lot, probably an improvement to the general area. Yeah, yeah, it's a little, it's a little bit bigger in the context of the lot. You know, yeah, you want to maintain the same distances that you already had, but you're improving the site. And, and you're making the site more, you know, you know, more current with the way, probably the size of automobiles today, so I don't, and you have the room in the distance between the back of the dwelling and the garage itself. So I don't, based on your photos, unless I'm missing something, I don't think you're obstructing anyone's view or anything like that. I don't even know, and I, and I would, even to say, if you were, if you were proposing to take that structure and put it dead center behind your house and move it closer, I'd say, well, you know, maybe Alan's point is right, or right on, because now you have this, this larger non-conformity sort of in the center of the lot, but you're really keeping it right where it is. I would think that that would fit.
The concrete man suggested that I move it forward three feet from where it is now on the back wall, because of the trees that are across the property line in the back. Said the roots would, would hurt the concrete wall in a number of years. Not right away, but eventually the trees would, would make the wall itself have a problem. So that was the reasoning for moving the wall forward three feet in the back. The, the logical rise, like I said, was mainly so I could fit the three cars and the lawn mowers and the patio furniture and the, you know, all the things that I have that are storage, the rakes and...
Why do you have to have that extra house storage?
I don't want to leave all the lawn mowers and things outside that grill in the wintertime.
So is it going to be something that you can put up with the loft?
There's, there's no loft planned. The loft was on there originally, but it's not any longer, it's just an open structure. Just a, just a floor with metal trusses.
Because, I mean, you're adding in addition probably six feet from the structure in height?
Yeah.
Six to seven, it looks like?
Well, that was to get to peak.
It'll be twenty feet.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be twenty feet at the peak.
Which to me, that, I mean, if the, the zoning bylaws thirty-five. You don't see a lot of ten-foot tall garages like that here.
No, I mean, I think that, you know, I think you're taking something that, you know, it was a period construction, it's dated. You know, I don't even think it would be, you know, I don't really know how you would construct that by today's standards. You'd have to construct something different that was more compliant with these, with the codes today, you know. I mean, I understand Ms. McIntyre's point with respect to the setbacks, I mean, very narrow.
It is, it's a very narrow piece of property.
But it's a narrow lot, you know, you can see it's a narrow lot, I mean, so we have forty, forty-five feet, forty-seven feet? In terms of the width of the lot?
At the back, it's forty-seven feet, at the front, it's fifty. And it's, it's almost two-hundred feet deep.
And I think that sort of drives, drives the whole thing right there. I mean, if you had enough, you know, some lots, you know, what's the width today? You know, I mean, I think if you had the width to begin with, you wouldn't even need the relief.
Yes.
My contention is that he's increasing the size of that garage by fifty percent.
But he's not increasing it with respect to the side setbacks, it's coming forward.
So what if he was to bring the side setbacks in? It would make a little more conforming as for what Ellen wants, if the structure shrinks, shrinks a little bit.
Well, they might make it, it's nobody's asking for.
I understand. But if he was asking for a structure of eight-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet, what he has now, okay, which means a smaller building. And I haven't done the mathematics on this, but let's say he takes off five and five of the sidelines, just to throw at numbers here. He gets a little bit closer to what it should be, and a little more space around the thing, and he now has what was there.
What is the side, what should it be? The side is fifteen on each side.
Yeah, so that's never going to happen, right?
So you take, I mean, if you, so, I mean, you're kind of being somewhat arbitrary in terms of what he's looking for. This is what he has, okay? So at some point, these are the lot lines are created. If, the minimum side setback is fifteen and fifteen, if you wanted him to comply...
That's not going to happen, we understand that.
That wouldn't work.
Yeah, no, no, I totally get that. Okay. So, so we're just trying to make a bad situation a little bit better.
So Alan's not advocating for spring, squeezing the new structure by thirty feet, fifteen and fifteen on each side? Alan's just saying squeeze it into Ellen's point, which is the, you know, the setbacks of the existing house, which is six and six-point-seven on the left and ten-point-eight on the right.
That's Ellen's.
But what would be, what would be the point of changing the person's application?
The largest three feet narrower in the back than it is in the front, three feet.
He's already, this, this is his relief, this is what he's looking for. So I think, you know, I don't understand what the point of that would be. If you had neighbors that were complaining, and you had something that was, you know, an issue, but we don't, we don't have an issue.
Well, the only issue we have, Mr. Chairman, we run into this a lot at these meetings, is that Ellen has raised an issue, and so therefore, we have an issue. You may not perceive it to be an issue because there's not any opposition in the, in the gallery, but the reality is if a board member brings something up, it's an issue. It doesn't have to be an issue that prevails.
I think it's a comment.
Because she might be alone on an island here, as we've talked about. But it is still an issue.
I, I think it's all relative, you know, and, and so as it relates to issues, it's all relative in the context of what's really going on here.
How long have you owned this house?
Eleven years.
Eleven years?
When I first moved in, I have an antique Thunderbird that I have, goes in sideways, actually, across. And then I, I, when I first moved in there, we had a Corvette and a Mustang. And the, but the Mustang was a seventy-three, which is eighteen-point-seven feet, and the garage is nineteen. I could barely close the door. You know, now I have a Dodge Charger, like a police car, and it's a collectible. And I try to put it in there, and again, I run into the same situation, it's eighteen and a half feet. And I only have six inches in front of the car when I close the door. I say I have to pull the cars out in order to get in the garage to do anything. I can't just walk around the cars to get into the garage. I would like it to be larger, and possibly put a bench across the back, which is what I was looking at.
To make another point on the applicant's behalf, he has a fifty thousand dollars' worth of driveway leading up along the property line to the existing garage. And if we were to suggest or imply that the structure ought to be brought in from the property line some distance, all of a sudden, the driveway sort of doesn't make sense anymore. And then he's destroying the edge of his property line to regrade, which is a retaining wall now, and have to, have to rebuild his driveway for not a very legitimate reason, in my opinion.
I think that retaining wall's coming down anyway, is it the whole garage?
All the way up the side of the driveway.
I'm just showing this, this whole retaining wall.
On both sides of the yard, all the way up, there's walls.
My issue is I feel it's too close to the lot line. And when you have an opportunity to change it and correct and make it a little, little more conforming, because you aren't going apples to apples, absolutely not.
Let's hear from Leo Byers. Do you hear from Leo Byers? Is anybody here that would like to speak for or against the petition? Anybody would like to speak for or against the petition?
I'm the neighbor next door to him, where he's a foot on, foot and a half on my property. And I have no grievance with him to move that over and do that, because that garage is so close to the ground in the back. I've seen, I've been there for thirty-five years. And I've seen animals jump up on it, dogs and that, and little kids there. And I'm afraid the little kids are going to get up there and they're going to fall off.
Sure.
And I don't want to see that.
And your name and address for the applicant?
Robert Q. Watt. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
It is lot thirty-two.
Lot thirty-two.
MAP nine, lot thirty-two.
Okay, got you.
Then he's right here.
Yeah. All right, Director Byers. All right, so... You're right, it's a dead-end, it's a dead-end street.
One more house after him. That's Matheson. Used to be a two-family there, and years ago, somebody torched it. And Matheson built the house there, and he has no problems with it at all.
I had to, the flat roof, I had to get up there and shovel that thing off three times.
That's winter, we all know what kind of winter it was.
Even with the winters.
And, you know, I'm...
Look, I understand what you're...
I'm not real fond of climbing up on a roof in the middle of winter and shoveling it off. I have a picture here from winter, if anybody's interested in seeing how the, how the driveway comes up from the street. And I mean, there's, there's walls on both sides of this driveway coming up, right up to where the house is.
Sure.
And this is a picture on my phone, taking a look at it, yeah, the property. I'm just saying, you know, it shows that the walls are there, going all the way up the whole side of the driveway, because those pictures don't show the wall all the way up the driveway like it is.
So, I mean, I, you know... Ms. McIntyre has her position on this, I mean, I totally respect it, I understand where she's going with it. You know, in a lot of cases, it makes a lot of sense. Personally, and, you know, always speaking for myself, I understand what you want to do. And I, I think looking at the totality of the facts and what you want to do, and the location, the size of the lot, the dead-end street, what you want to build, I get it. I don't, I, you know, I, I think it's, I'm okay with what you want to do, I, I understand it. But procedurally, you know, in terms of how this board works, when we close the public hearing, you do, you do need four out of five votes. It's, it requires a supermajority, so for the variance and for the special permit. So we are a five-person board with three alternates. I think we only have one alternate here tonight. So that's, that's how it works, all right? So when you, when you feel like, when everyone feels like they've asked you enough questions and the situation is exhausted, you know...
If you have any more questions.
Well, we'll ask, they'll ask you as much as they want, and then it's up to you if you want us to close the hearing tonight and vote on it, or if you want a continuance to look, to get more information based on their questions. It's, it's up to you, okay? In terms of how you want to do it. I think it's a pretty easy case, I see. So open up, anybody else that wants to ask you questions, I mean, now?
I think it's fine, I think it fits in. I think the incentive is, he's got, the incentive for him to spend the money and do the project, obviously, if he's going to do it, he, he needs more room in his garage. And the only way that's going to happen is by, you know, trying to get it in there as best he can. You know, when you're talking about, you know, what's an appropriate number of feet away from the lot line? I mean, we have zoning bylaws for a certain amount of feet. This obviously can never be fifteen feet off the property line, so I, I don't have a problem with it. It's my thing.
So just, the regular members of the board are Alan, Ellen, myself, Rick and Paul, okay? And that's just, so there'd be, unless anybody wasn't voting, those would be the five people voting on your petition tonight.
I understand where Rick is coming from, okay? You know, my only concern is, I wish it was a little smaller, okay? So you're not increasing by fifty percent the non-conformity. Like the chairman says, overall, it is better for what's there. I get it.
So before you sit down...
Yes.
Paul?
I'm good.
Eddie? Okay, would you like us to close the public hearing and, and vote the petition? Okay, and I'll hear a motion to close the hearing.
Can I make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter?
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, declare that closed. Any further discussion, or anybody would like to make a motion as it relates to the filing?
Rick, you did such a nice job at the open.
I would not, I'd love to. Do you want to do the special permit first?
I lined up the plans and everything for you.
Special permit first, if you'd like to vary it.
Well, it'll be...
What are you doing together, so you don't have to say everything over?
All right.
You nervous?
No. No, I was going to read it from here. I'll make a motion, I think we got to do separately, procedurally, huh? Because if we vote on one...
Procedurally, it's probably better to do them separate.
I'll make a motion to, to grant a special permit... I'll make a motion to, to grant a special permit from Section 9.1 of the zoning bylaw for pre-existing conform structure, for the building of a, raising and building up a garage. And I'll reference a plan, what was Sullivan Engineering? Sullivan Engineering Group dated January 8th, 2015. And, oh, I have, architectural plan? Engineering plans by Stephen Maslin and Company, March 19th, 2015.
17.
Oh, he stamped it on there. Okay. March 17th, 2015. I think it was E1 and E2.
I don't know if these are official enough for you, Mr. Secretary, but they're full of drawings, if you care to reference them.
Sure. We'll ref, reference three drawings. Three drawings done by somebody for a proposed... Did you do the... I don't know how official that is, though.
There it is.
All right. That's my motion for your special permit.
Is there a second?